Members present were Mayor Tammy Rose Bachelor, James Lovin, James Preston, Heath Hedley, Chris Gillen was absent. Mayor Colleen Corrigan called the meeting to order. Minutes were read from the last regular meeting. James Preston approved them as read. Heath Hedley, second. James Preston, approved to pay the bills listed on each account. Heath Hedley, second. Motion, all yes. Trump or treat will be October thirty first, twenty nineteen, at the apartment six until eight. The Christmas parade will be December thirteenth, twenty nineteen. We will lock the tree and serve refreshments afterwards. James Preston made a motion to adjourn. James Lovin, second, all yes.
My motion, accept the trade.
Allen Baker.
I abstain.
Now she'll read the minutes from the special call meeting.
Members present were Mayor Tammy Rose Bachelor, James Lovin, James Preston, Chris Gillen, and Heath Hedley. The mayor called a form present, called the meeting to order. Reason for the meeting is to discuss the Miller Building rent. To increase the rent from two thousand per month to thirty-five hundred per month on a month-to-month basis. We get a contract. Uh, James Preston made a motion for immediate consideration to raise the rent on the Miller Building as of November the first, twenty nineteen, to thirty-five hundred per month. James Lovin, second, all in yes. James Preston made a motion to raise the rent on the Miller Building as of November first, twenty nineteen, to thirty-five hundred per month. James Lovin, second, all in yes. Chris Gillen made a motion to amend the previous amount that was set by the council made in twenty nineteen. This new agreement will take precedence over the vote. This is based off the recent appraisal that was just done. James Preston, second, the motion, all in yes, except James Lovin abstaining. James Lovin made a motion to adjourn. James Preston, second, all in yes.
Yeah.
I make the motion to approve the minutes. Second?
Allen Baker.
All right, uh, we'll start by reading the balance in all, in all the accounts. Uh, starting with the Bear Creek Water Department. Available funds, eighteen thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. Available funds for the Bear Creek Municipal Court, seven thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and seventy-one cents. Available funds for the Twin Corps Campground, two thousand, forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Available funds for the general funds account is six thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Available funds for the police and fire fund, ten thousand, seven dollars and forty-seven cents. Available funds for the three, fire department three bill tax account, thirty-three thousand, one hundred nine dollars and sixty cents. Available funds for the County Bear Creek Services Account, five thousand, two hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Available funds for the Park and Recreation is four thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars and twenty-six cents. Available funds for the Bear Creek Rental Account, eleven thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Available funds for the street and road repair, two thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Available funds for the Bear Creek Transportation Rehabilitation Account, one hundred dollars. Available funds for the Bear Creek Officers Fund, three hundred forty-six dollars and two cents. Available funds for the Bear Creek Fire Department, sixteen thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and seventy-five cents. Available funds for the Fire Department Tax Account, six thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and nine cents. Available funds for the Street Repair Account, seven thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. And available funds for the Municipal Share Account is two thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Next on the agenda is, uh, bills.
The town bills and the water department bills. Uh, the town bills. Does this, is this pretty much what the? Okay, you said the down payment on the insurance to true.
Each department, that would be six, that pays sixteen, sixty-four oh five, that would make the down payment instead of one.
So if that's how, if they're, if we split it up, if we divide it up between the accounts, it would, each account would pay one thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars and five cents, which would total the nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents that would typically come out of the general funds account. But this way, each, each department will pay their own portion of the insurance. So that would less this amount that's due. But right with, with the total of the nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, it totals to, the town bills would be nineteen thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. That is if the general funds pays all of that. The campground bills is, uh, three thousand, twenty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Police Department bills that are due is four thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Fire Department bills that are due for November, seven hundred thirty dollars, seventy-nine cents. The court, uh, this is software that's due, is four hundred fifty dollars, and we have to have that. Water Department bills that are due, and this includes the large water bill at the end, that'll be due at the end of November, which that, this total includes the twenty, the water bill, the large water bill is twenty-three thousand, eight twenty-two seventy. The total bills due for the Water Department for November is twenty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Okay, and then the power bill, uh, over at the camp, uh, at the park area is eight hundred forty-six dollars, and then the, the, uh, this, the street lights, which would come out of the street and road account, would be eight hundred eleven dollars and seven cents.
James is, I mean, that's, but you always get stuff from James because he, that's Ray Carney could just marry. Yeah, and the Ray Carney's gonna bring you too, and the insurance.
And still be, still be due, that's in fuel camp because that's, the fire trucks can go up there and hear, raise the fuel because either one of them has a head.
So, overall, even though it's, uh, I mean, it's not, we do, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not a utility. We're all, the cost, having to repair, the cost to repair the equipment. Overall, I guess you could consider it part of the, we're not about all.
Yes, because, um, Andrew got fuel for the general, um, the lights board, and then fire trucks, you know, fire camp, and then Tessa and him got fuel for one of our state restaurants.
Yeah, gotcha.
Hey, Andrew, we had to go get something from normal or real players, and they's all in the parks.
And then the families, otherwise that's eight hundred forty to watch, just like.
That's just camp correct. Because they pick up twice a month, and we can probably, you know, twice a week, we can probably cut that back now to once a week. But those kids draw so much.
If we can, that'd be good. Real good.
And the ice on the sign on the water, that's where the signs.
That big water bill comes in a month after we get our.
Yes. The twenty-three, and it's came down. It's steadily on its time to go down.
That's good.
Twenty-seven to twenty-four now.
That's really good, yeah. That's great, dog.
But many times all the ways on the playground, we can probably put that in half, I'll have one need to water.
Well, unless you make one clear.
We don't have, I think there's like, Kathy, can you say six? How many campers we got up there?
None.
No, so we can probably have two or three more. Or do we go maybe?
I don't care. I don't know.
We can put it in half and see what happens, and then.
I think it, I think it, once a week, the dumpsters. I mean.
Once a week.
Once a week.
Once a week, two or three.
Yes.
Just cut it back to one a week, save us some money.
Yes.
If we can, it'd be great.
Plus hopefully up there the gas bill will go down too, because they're not mowing grass.
It, it has.
Yeah, it's already started growing.
Already started going, yeah.
We need a space. Vote on yes.
I mean, you can just add that into the vote.
To break, for each department to pay their own portion. Yeah, I think that'd be the best. Just let each department pay their portion of the insurance. The down payment. So that's what, that's, I mean, eventually, it was gonna come to this anyway. Each department, this is the down payment, so each department will pay the one thousand, six, sixty-four oh five. And then, when the monthly bill comes in, we'll divide it up and let each department pay their portion of the bill. Is that fair?
Any clue what that'll be?
It's around six hundred dollars a month, look like six, eighteen, something, give and take.
Do they split it, or is that after it's?
Do they split it, no, I mean, that's after it's, but each department pay around six, eighteen, twenty.
Eight hundred?
Okay. But it's like three thousand and something dollars.
So they're approximately six hundred.
My motion, I favor bill stipulation of this sixteen, sixty-four oh five. My next department put down a vote on the insurance. I say.
Allen Baker.
I'd like for Jamie to make sure that the insurance, I'm, I'm, I'm voting for all eight. Just make sure that each department has got even liability there. See, now the police department's probably got a lot bigger liability than what the car department does. You know, their job description. It might not hurt to be tired just to split it up even, because some departments' liability may not be as large as other departments. I've, I've, I've looked at that to check that out. Good to pay it. Everything else, you know, you should split it on your, 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 that's all.
And stand on, Mr. Wallace, the accountant, the auditor, would be, he'll tell us really how we need to deal with that. And he, he'll be here that day.
All, all the vote was tonight was just pay it like it is tonight.
Right, yes.
We, we, we're not voting for next month, split it up. It's just an idea.
Okay, next on the agenda is update from the, uh, each department, if you need, don't look for you. All right, Tyson?
No issues or needs at this moment, we're just trying to keep flooding away what we're doing. The water loss plateaued this month, even though the total purchasing didn't go down. So we're still trying to get that, chip away at that, trying to get everyone to pay. We still have a hundred customers passed through from last month, so that's something we've been really stressing, trying to get everybody current, as, as few customers as possible, so, day to day, it's about the same.
I would, y'all heard probably go, the campground's down to none, and I feel like there's two more gonna be pulling out probably this week, um, because their children are in sports and, um, I haven't had any weekend campers like in the last two weeks. Um, I do have some coming in this weekend. Uh, we've been trying to keep a close watch. When the temperatures got down in the thirties at night, we had the pilot lights and one brick going, you know, to try to help with frozen stuff over there, even though it wasn't gonna stay cold that long. But then Jimmy and I've been going back and really checking them and making sure they're not staying on and just leaving the pilot lights on, where if they need to, uh, they can use them when they're showering. Uh, they have put the, the, um, panels up in the bathhouses to keep the cold air from coming in up around the screen, so that's been done. Uh, when the two windstorms come through in the last two weeks, it's, uh, there's been some trees blow down over there, and, uh, one of my campers had a stick go straight through his skyline, and, uh, of course, had a lot of water damage, but, you know, he says, again, that's just part of camping, you know, the liability of parking under trees, that's susceptible. Uh, you know, so we've had a little bit of damage over there because of the rainstorms, the trees and stuff. Andrew Nims, uh, been pretty good about going over there and, um, getting rid of some of the brush and pounding it up. And, um, another thing, uh, right now, while everything is as low as it is as far as, uh, how many campers is over there, if they, uh, don't have a lot to do, we could start cleaning up a little early, you know. I know there's still a lot of leaves and stuff like that that's still got to come down. But, uh, we've had three or four trailer loads of sticks that we've picked up and, and burned this week and, you know, trying to clean up what damage and what the big sticks are that's over there. And another thing, just in finalizing it, I would like for y'all, as a mayor and city council, to think about, uh, when we do close down in February, maybe letting the campers that are over there pull their campers out and park in the grassy area right there on the other side of the gate. That way, they wouldn't have to pull their campers all the way home. I know there won't be any electricity, and I've told them that, that they'll have to empty their refrigerators and stuff like that out. But at least, you know, give them something to think about, that they won't have to pull their campers all the way. February's only got twenty-eight days, and, you know, it's gonna be a lot easier cleanup this time than it was last time because we had to do so much. So maybe if, if we could get y'all to just think about it, don't vote on it tonight, about just letting the campers come out and park, but still have to go through the draw. You know, that I'm sure y'all are gonna have, I guess we're gonna have another draw. And they don't mind that, it's just them not having to pull their campers all the way home and come back. So just think about that and keep that on your mind if you don't care.
Next on the agenda, raise the late fees and disconnect fees for water.
Like I said a month ago, we try to entertain, right now is a ten percent late fee, and that's not been effective, and encourage the customers go ahead and pay their bills, because we average a third of the customers taking a late fee every month. And, uh, so I was trying to get it raised. Um, as far as recommendation for me, you know, it's just whatever y'all feel is comfortable. I'm not gonna give a specific recommendation.
Do we know what any of them, what, the town, which one's choice?
It, it varies, system to system, it's just all over the map. Um, but just keep it in mind, right now, if you look at the minimum bill, roughly about thirty-two dollars, so a late fee for most people is about three bucks, they don't care. And we have a lot of those. Whatever y'all choose to vote for, I would definitely like an increased period. Uh, the lockout fee is sixty dollars, it's the same customers, every month, the same sixty bucks. I'd like to up that, because obviously, they're not caring, don't care they get the sixty dollars, and it doesn't bother them. So whatever y'all feel is necessary to raise that too, to try and see, you know, except to y'all as well. No specific recommendation. What I did in my last system, we started low and kept going higher and higher till it found breaking point for those ones that like to pay it every month. So it's, this may be something we revisit if it's not effective in getting people to pay their bills.
I pulled the late bills today. And I mean, there's other one, you can't, I can't, you can't have one bill that they pass there in February. You're ready for our late fees, theirs is, their water bill's due on the fifteenth. It's not paid by the twenty fifth, by closing time. They have assessed, big dollar service fee. Accounts not paid by the third of the following month. The accounts change. Accounts cut off. And they have to back on that thousand, the account balance. Plus, an origination fee, I don't know what that fee is. There's a few different things y'all, there's been a saying, just, everything is make sure it's in writing on the bills, to understand when they get, what term it's on. If somebody goes into dispute, or cut it off, it's a dispute, we don't, don't look into it. Just not to change people, what y'all specifically, that you're gonna do?
If I just table?
I can get some ideas, what do you think, Ash?
What do you mean, table on you?
Getting a few ideas of what everybody else is doing.
If that's what y'all choose to do, that's fine, that's why I mentioned it a month ago, to try and revisit it tonight. If we need to table it again, we can, but I'd like to get to it as soon as possible.
What do you, what is your idea?
Excellent. Without being specific, doubling it would be fine with me. Because it's gonna affect different customers with different bills differently. You know, chicken house doesn't pay, ten percent significant for them, whereas it's not for a small ease customer. If we're trying to deal with every customer the same, we're just dealing in percentages, doubling it would be, if we could start there, if y'all didn't wanna go that high, we can start lowering. But the key is, is trying to find the point where we can get people to pay without letting it roll over, because a third of the system is ridiculous.
You always spend a lot of time.
We spend a third of our time chasing and trying to get people to pay, because we need the money in. And if we could spend less time chasing bills, we spend more time fixing leaks, doing, installing meters, other stuff that needs to get done. Because we honestly spend two days a week trying to do collections, and, and that's ridiculous.
What about something like a twenty percent? Say it's ten percent, I do twenty percent or twenty-five dollars, or thirty dollars, whichever one y'all wanna do, whichever one's greater, on late fee. Like I said, on chicken house and stuff, I don't wanna go, I think that would, I think that would, I'm saying, chicken house bill will walk more. Something he needs right, there's something.
You know, it's not gonna affect the people who pay their bill on time, it's only gonna affect the.
And most people, they, they, you know, the number one mistake they get is, well, I didn't get my bill. Well, when they go out, you've got three weeks to pay it. If you realize you ain't got those three weeks, you know, how many times do you have to get it then figured out? If there's a mistake, we can always reverse the fee, if we made a mistake, that's easy fix. But it's always the people that just show up when they want to. There's a lot of them, that just show up when they want to pay and think that it's never gonna get cut off. You know, I, I, I'm more interested in collecting that lot now.
I mean, that's a nice thing, when you stop doing that, it's something else, everything. That's one valid recommendation, they just, you know, do, do it two ways, you know, a proceeding plus a late fee, whichever one's greatest of the two.
Let's raise that, uh, reconnecting fee. It's what, sixty now?
Sixty now, yes.
Maybe go to a hundred, I, I don't know, something gotta be done to get these people to realize, they got to pay the fee.
What's your part, what would you like to do? What would you like to do, your partner?
Well, I don't know. I'm okay, I don't agree with that.
My mistake.
But I do propose, I make a motion, I go up to twenty percent on a late fee, and go up a hundred on a reconnect.
So just a flat twenty percent. James said twenty-five or twenty-five dollars, whichever is greater, is that what you meant by that?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I just suggested, you know, good.
Just twenty percent.
Yeah, we start.
Flat twenty percent, then a hundred dollars reconnect fee. All right.
We go. I say so, fifteen, go up to twenty bill on late fees, or, you know, ten, I figure you pay it.
The bills, the bills are due on the twenty, and they're paying on the twenty-first, so just disconnect on the twenty-fee.
I'd start with December's billing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think December's billing would be the fairest thing to do, give them a, but, but make a notation on the card for this next month, telling folks, that way they have ample time to be notified. And mighty day, of course, it'll be the paper too, but, or the bill, if there's someone, make a notation. Simple letters, or do, you know.
Yeah, probably, you need to do a letter, just need to do a letter out.
So twenty percent, late fee now, up, up from the previous ten percent, and then a hundred reconnect. Keep putting that in the form.
I'd like a motion to go ahead and go to, from ten to twenty percent late fee, and from sixty to a hundred reconnect fee on our water.
I'll say.
Allen Baker. Okay, next on the agenda is combining multiple checking accounts and renaming the account. And this is a recommendation by Mr. Wallace, the municipal accountant and auditor. We've got, uh, we've got entirely to recheck the account.
Uh, we just created, so, we had to do that.
Yeah, because the title is.
Was it created, it was key, was it just, all for that?
Yeah, before, and, although he wants to keep those, but it's like we've got, uh, we have multiple. We have the fire department, we have the bullet.
Have him.
He'll be in.
Put one in there.
Eighteen.
He'll wait in there, okay.
Yeah, we can just, yeah, that would be better, title that, so he can come in and explain instead.
It would be simpler to reoffer.
So that would be the same thing. So that would be the same thing.
Table that also, easier.
Yeah, number seven. Yeah, yeah, because at our house, and like, it's the same thing, but still, dealing with multiple checking accounts, so we just, when on that, we'll, six and seven.
I'll do that later.
Yeah, and he will make it.
I'll make the next meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting, and he will have the audit, if he's, he will.
Each number's involved on eighteenth.
He will present the audit on eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, I don't think you'll have nothing, so he can even start acting July, I think he's set up. But he is kind of looking at it, he kinda gave me an idea, okay, so. Okay, update, um, that's, next on the agenda is uptown, on town, and audit, uh, and the, and budget. Uh, when he presents, when he comes to eighteenth, and presents and explains the audit, he will also, hopefully, he's gonna try to have some kind of idea of a budget, if, if at all possible. So he said that he, he would go up on that end up. With the council, with what. Okay, loan restructuring, the treasury of harvest, that, uh, that goes along with after, you know, what's he, what's still. They're looking at, trying to do what we have, uh, was wanting to do before all this happened, when we were waiting on the previous audit, and, uh. Then we'll, but we've gotta wait to get the audit, we've gotta wait for Mr. Wallace to explain everything to us, and so that's part of that as well.
Yeah, I would consider maybe get boiled off of the company presented. And a lot of banks will do that, when companies present, they'll give, give a name, it's like, all for the kind of, consolidating all this.
I don't think that'd be a problem at all.
No, it takes, I thought boiled, I mean, it's just like, you know.
All right, next on the agenda is, I had a question, because I've had several people ask me, does NACOD feed lunch or meals to our senior citizens in our town? They do not, okay.
That is a program that we would have to hire somebody full-time to be here and oversee all that. And I think Tyson may mention that, you didn't think we could rent this out if we had all that going on?
There is a lot of stipulation to go with, if you're gonna have a NACOD program and you're feeding senior citizens, it's something to look into, through all details.
I just wonder how other community centers live it, and I guess, I guess it's the way they purchase their building, compared to how we did it here, this one. That's too bad, I mean, I'd like to explore it though, because I was asked about that a while back.
Yeah. Well, that's, and I.
There's other communities that do it too.
Yeah, I think Keith just, because when I went to that last.
Not all, but there's some.
They thought maybe, uh, I mean, they have, there's a lot of things that would be helpful, uh, for the seniors especially, having meals, and then before the holidays and stuff. I know we have several, so, I, you know, that, that raised a question, and then I had a couple of people that, that had approached, they wanted to know why we didn't offer something, since we had this building, but I think. They were under the impression that we could use this, you know, for the seniors, and, uh, we need to, like you said, explore that and see if we can.
Make progress, that would be a safe assumption, we're possible, so it's close to the door.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to you. Okay, next on the list, I was approached, uh, by Joey and then, uh, Dr. Temple. The juniors and seniors at the high school, they need, uh, or it would be great, they could have community service credit. At, to go on their high school transcript, and I didn't know if there was any kind of, some, I mean, there's plenty to do, I mean, as far as, it wouldn't, it's not like paying the students. If they're, they would be volunteering their time, whether it's coming out and going, you know, set up for the Christmas, you know, if they're ready for Christmas, or if it's, to, when it warms up, to, you know, pick up. Garbage alone, you know, not the main hallway, but, or work in the campground, or, you know, some way showing that they have volunteered, it's a volunteer community service credit. And, uh, it does look good on their transcript when they go, you know, to a college, and, you know, the name, I mean.
Dr. Temple's asked about, you know, somehow starting a committee, and however the process is, we have, that gets done here, uh, where we'd have some kind of committee. Where we'd be in touch with him, whether he's on the committee or not, to set up some kind of community service, where the kids from the school could have some kind of community service. And he would print out certificates for it, so they could put it on their college transcript, uh, application, stuff like that, because it goes a long way and helps out. Right now, you know, people, they're like, you know, working up the community, they don't, for nothing.
Yeah, I mean, any kind of community, you know, volunteer community service, so.
Exactly, whatever, on there, it's one, it's the first action, whatever his, he's asking for.
I mean, all, all it is, is he just wants something where the students can volunteer in the town.
Right.
And approve it, I mean, I, I think the simplest thing to do would be is, if like, we have some events coming up, we tell him, he submits a list of students to us. You know, to be approved, you know, it has to be approved from the council, the mayor, or whatever, and then go from there.
What did, what I made to find out, Dr. Temple was, would he be willing to send out a white, when the students have a parent that's signed? Because they can sign it, right?
Right, I'm sure, I'm sure he would, because they see anything to help the kids and, you know.
Permission slip.
Well, that's, well, that, yeah, that, that goes along with, uh, permission slips that we do.
Same, same.
So anyways, that would be covered, I'm sure.
Trash is terrible from seventy-nine, I'll play the campground.
I'd love to treat up here, you know, we had kids volunteer, a dollar.
Right.
Yeah, and I mean, we're gonna be decorating the Christmas tree here, and.
Put offloaders, and pack out trees, so.
Yes, I mean, there's, so there's lots of, so we're in favor of that, we just, I mean, we like that idea, we just.
Although we need a committee, I just think, if we have any activities, we just tell him, when he comes and gives us a list, then we.
Well, you thought about, you know, maybe he, you know, like some kind of, like a top to Hawaii highway, or seventy-nine, and what, railroad tracks all that, and the bridge, or something like that. You know, uh, church groups put together functions, or anything like that, or. Or be more than just a, 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 a.
We could use some help over here during the trigger trump, too.
Don't worry, we'll think of, there's all kinds of options that can be used.
Right, you've got the Christmas, Christmas stuff, free coming up, and you've got, and then you've got cleanup.
But, you know, as far as committee, I like, I think it'd be something where he, he can get with somebody, you know, as far as forums go, which I was talking about, I mean, can't, I'm not, coming up with ideas for them to actually do.
Okay, we just need to give a note.
I just, like I said, I just suggest, there's any timely activities coming up, we mentioned it, I mean, he, he can ask the students if they're gonna volunteer, and let them sign up, they. And get permission forms, and just tell us who they are, that they can cover it.
Yes, have you already, I don't know what to do about it. Putting it in their record or something, we had some football players, and Jill was here the other night.
That's what I just said, I, I figured. That we just did that, we were, uh, we got asked to do that, that part, now Jill, she volunteered around, but. Football players, speaking about that, I came up there with, when they, when they were asked to come by, I think, the park were ready for that, so someone to tell them about. That would be a good example, just do it, but if they know ahead of time, I'm sure the school knows ahead of time, just, for that activity, you know, they could ask the kids, they could sign up. And then tell y'all, and be known with it, they can go volunteer, we can turn around, we don't have to, you know, meet and talk about it for a while, and just do this, and be known.
All right. So we'll get with Dr. Temple on that, and, and figure all that out. All right, uh, next on the agenda. Uh, there's nothing new to report on the attorney general investigation, it is still actively ongoing, and, uh. There's no information at this time that we can, you know, that we can release, other than it is, uh, they are actively investigating, and that's all that I can, you know, I can say at this time. The twenty-twenty census, we've still got to get on board with that, I've requested some information, and hopefully by the next council meeting, I'll have more information on that, but it's slowly, well, not slowly, it's vastly approaching, and. We've got to make sure that all of our citizens are accounted for, us, so we, I mean, we've got more people living here now, we need to know, because that just qualifies us for more grants and stuff.
Well, the states are really pushing it, because we're, we're a danger of losing our state representative, I mean, a US representative in the House or something.
Yeah. Next, uh, the volleyball team, they made it to the state final four last week, and, uh, unfortunately, they lost, but they, I got to go watch the regional tournament, and they played wonderful. And the girls have nothing to be ashamed of at all, uh, I think at some point, that we need to try to acknowledge their accomplishment by doing something. For them, I know there's, we're fixing to go right into basketball, and then we've got the holidays, but we don't need to forget about these girls, their hard work and their accomplishment needs to be acknowledged by the town, and so. I would like for us to consider doing something, whether it's like what we did at Daddy Fleming, Fleming Building for the basketball team, when, uh, you know, we had lunch up there, for the, and I'd like to do something like that. For them as well, that, that's a huge accomplishment, and, and, they need to be acknowledged.
They'd like that.
They, they deserve that.
They'd really like that.
They played really hard. I missed, we were in Texas, but the state finals, but I, we got to watch them, and Huntsville, and they were, I mean, they were, they were fantastic. Next on the agenda is, uh, charging for the pavilion, use of the pavilion at the Twin Forks Park on the B C D A properties. Uh, I know, I was told by Debbie Corbin, she said that they used to charge all the time to rent the pavilion, I know it's went, you know, it was probably not gonna have a lot of use right now, but it is something that we need to take a look at. All the other B C D A properties charged to use their pavilion, and, uh. So. I know, uh, they charge twenty-five dollars for four hours for a happy day, and forty dollars for eight hours, or anything over four hours is considered a full, a full day, so. I, I, I didn't know how y'all feel about that, but I do think, because we're paying our employees to go over there and clean up, and we provide the power, and. And all, you know, everything from all of the toiletries and stuff in the bathrooms and stuff, so it, it's an, it, it is an expense, it's a cost to the town.
All the other parks, the B C D A parks charging?
Yeah, that's our base.
Will that only go in the parking rec, or will it go in the general fund for collections of that?
It'll probably go, well. It'll go in parking rec, because it's on the parking rec side, so, yeah, I, if that's on the parking rec, that's not on the campground side, so I would think that the parking rec would, uh, they would get money for this.
That's fine.
I mean, I don't think that's weird, because I mean, it's on, that's on the parking rec side of.
Town, you wanna make names.
But the town doesn't make names, or you could split, you know.
It's the parking rec.
But the parking rec pays for the town.
What do you think about that?
How about places, I mean, what's gonna be the penalty if somebody's over there and ain't paid?
Most places is, looks like, you don't have to rent it just to go there and sit, but you got a party or something, I can get together, and they can rent it.
Yeah, and if we, and if someone is over there having, well, we just need to put up something, that, you know, you need to contact, you know, in order to, most people do.
Yeah, most people do.
They do contact.
They'll be, like, churches and stuff like that will contact, but like, just anybody having a birthday party, they just go.
No, if they give it, they've got signs.
But there's their signs up, you know, so they think it's just first come, first served.
Once he publishes, publishes it in the paper too, that's gonna let it know, but we're, I'm over there on the weekends, and usually Jamie calls me and lets me know when somebody has it reserved, and I put a sign up. That that day is reserved for that party.
I see.
So, um, and rope it off, you know, if need be, so there is a, a catch twenty, catch twenty-two to, to go back, you know, and find them, I mean, you know. Be there and see a big party going on, if I don't have them down, I go ask questions.
But that would just be also, you know, build back up some of the parking rec, that brings revenue to them as well.
Stop some labor stuff, go over and have picnic, and, and put the tables on the trees for that too.
That's right. I mean, but, yeah, so they can move to just the public picnic tables in the picnic area, and, because it would just be for the pavilion.
Well, we wash the tables, we blow the thing off, the garbages have to be emptied between each, like on Saturday to Sunday, uh, the bathrooms have to be checked for a big weekend. You know, company, the big thing that's been eating us alive and no charge for it, is the big companies coming in for big picnics over there. Um, you know, they're using jumping houses, they're using electricity for that, and, uh, you know, they make a bigger mess, of course, the last two companies have picked up after their sales good, but the cans are full.
But I don't think they would be opposed.
No.
To pay if they, if it was greater than forty dollars, or, you know, for a company to use that area, because the area is more across, I mean, it's more to, to that, because there's a lot of cleanup, there's toilet, paper towels, and so.
Can't buy more, use it.
Yeah, I mean.
That'd be, that'd be something yours.
Uh, I mean, it's not, it's not their fault.
Somebody that shows up to eat lunch over there having that state, you know, you're gonna say to them, you know, they're not hurting. But for the parties, that, I make a motion that we just adopt what the other B C D A properties do, and charge this twenty-five. For four hours, and forty for eight hours, or anything over four hours, it won't be considered a full day.
I'm a favor. Okay, and so if a company, if reincorporation comes in, do they just pay forty dollars?
I think our panelists would adjust it.
Okay. And then does that sound appropriate, just like you check with, with Jen at B C D A, and see how that handles that, and then after, yeah, that is okay, okay. All right, next on the agenda is Rob Taylor, who wants to touch his, to speak to us about the shelter for Ritz.
Yeah, we have, uh, found a enclosure for the repeater to go with Humble, is at Double Springs, the, uh, the cost is somewhat under two thousand dollars. And, uh, there'd be some, some charge, we'll have to insulate it, and, uh, put some kind of wall covering on the inside, and a small air conditioner, in the summer, it can't get too hot, the heat will, will kill electronics. Like, I said, about eighty-five to ninety degrees, it would be fine, but, uh, I, I think we could do everything that we need to do, and get everything up and going for less than three thousand dollars, and. I just want to let y'all know and get approval to, uh, to cap three thousand dollars, surely we can do it for less, but that's gonna be a safe bet. The building itself is nineteen oh eight twenty-five. And then, uh, whatever it costs to cover walls, insulation, uh, light fixtures, plug-ins, wiring, and that kind.
This may rob, it just messes, puts a major on exactly how much it's gonna cost.
Building's based in nineteen, whatever.
The building is a nineteen, whatever.
They said it's not, they went twenty-five.
Rest of it, we just buy it rose. I mean, it would be, a long way to estimate, get it over here, and figure if it's acting like any piece of insulation, I mean, pieces of wood, I mean, maybe a wall. We have it up, I think we have it, and all that, to pick it up, you know.
Do they, do they have?
I don't know, yeah. Yeah, but he just asked.
They have it at three, we'll get them.
Sir.
Did Matty also ask you?
Sorry, I don't think so.
Ron.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be over, it wouldn't be over three thousand.
I said it's not, he's kept it at thirty.
I was thinking, well, it'd be less than three, the building's size.
If it was over three, we'll go back and have some. I think it should be over there. It's something about twenty-five. I live up like, you know, if I, I don't have to be honest with you.
It shouldn't be, but, it's the cost of the, the air conditioner and that kind of thing, but the higher price that that is gonna have to lead to. Wire, of course, wire changes all the time, so it's whatever, whatever the cost would be.
Are you gonna buy one of those units, one of the units, that, uh, does heat in air?
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need the, uh, the heating part, just the air conditioner. Set the color to black. It's just, uh, just the, 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 the electronics, so we'll just have to, if it has to stay around eighty-five degrees, then.
I'll make a motion that we, we'll have them proceed to get materials from here.
Second.
I'm the favorer.
I'm the same, I'm trying to understand, Ron. Well, I like the statement, I like to go back on that. Uh, I thought when we just passed that, we agreed on, you know, up to three thousand. Yeah, we don't know if it did, if it does cost more than that, so they don't think it will, but if it did, we'll go back and amend it, just whatever it is.
You're probably sure it's up to three thousand.
Yeah, it was.
Well, we don't, the air conditioner's not gonna be a have-to right now. I don't think we're gonna have to deal with that for a little while, so if it happens to get over that, we can do everything except the air conditioner, we can, we can cross that later.
Well, you know, I'd obviously those, those units that have to do the heat, that, in the ACT, you know, I might be some working, a little bit more money, but that's.
Yeah. So I think, I think it probably, uh, three hundred dollar air conditioner works fine. We don't have to worry about the heating strips or anything like that. There's not gonna be a war or anything on it, it's just, just powerful, the, uh.
Well, I didn't notice inside the building, if it was, you know, if it ever was needed for heat for it or not, it's gonna live there now, but that's fine.
I'll, I'll ask, I'll get you to find out, but I don't think so.
We got down to the teeth here, you know, for a day or two, or with that, you know, you know, I don't really think about it here.
He told me the code on the bottom, just, just heat.
Another report, we need to have it, so, we'll go in, we need heat in air, that's fine.
Well, that, having this repeater's gonna help the surrounding areas as well.
It will have to attack it, yeah.
That's correct, that's correct. I'll try.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, one thing wasn't mentioned, uh, tonight, we called city hall a couple of weeks ago about senior citizen garbage pickup. Is the city gonna go and involve in that with Marion County this year, or, because we've got several, several senior citizens that.
Anybody that's, that's on, uh, so.
Social Security only.
Can get an application to get the town to pay for their garbage pickup.
But now, our understanding is y'all got to agree to it.
Jamie was the one that told me that, that y'all had to vote on it. Exemption in the yard, because all the garbage we got, that's what they're gonna, they're gonna.
Yeah, I probably, I don't know, I don't know if that age term, if there's, I don't know if that age term, if you ball by for it. I mean, this is something the town has to honor, versus something that's up to the town, that they wanna come and face.
I think it happened, told me it was up to the town.
Well, I, I mean, I, I know things are hard and stuff, but, you know, people, you know, that all retire today, you don't fix income. I, I, I think it's okay to pick the garbage up, right?
That, the state guidelines are pretty strict, all the state guidelines, you know.
You have to go once a year, redo it every year.
Where they go, they go to the health department, is that where it is?
Okay, there's four, we gotta fill out.
You have to have it authorized and bring it back to the office.
I just, I just thought we already been doing that. Have we not been doing that?
Yes, they did it last year, yes, but you have to redo it every, you're supposed to redo it every year.
We've been doing it.
And we just give it to it.
I mean, it's up, it's up, it's up to the individual.
When does it, when does it run out? When does the contract run out?
I have to say one, but I mean, you have to bring you an annual. But it's up to the person, it's up to us to do that, or the people do that?
It's up to the person, it's up.
It's up to the individual to pick up their application.
Right, and bring it, and bring it to the, bring it to the city hall. I believe it.
It's already in place.
It's already in place, and I mean, but we do, we have to, we have to vote again to redo it, or we just keep doing it. We've been doing it for years.
Yeah, but I think the proper way to do it, I think you have to do it every year. But I mean, we haven't added it back to anybody, so we're fine on that.
So we're still hearing it out.
We're still here now, but we need to put on the agenda next time, and y'all vote if y'all want to keep doing that.
Well, I mean, I would like to continue it, if it's lea, if, if possible, you know.
I'm understanding.
I mean, I'd like to continue to do the, listen, they're dead on, you're gonna get the application. Is it the health department official?
You have to go through the application, but you can either get it authorized and bring it back to them, or get it authorized and bring it to the water department.
Right, but who might, who signs up? Doesn't the health, who signs off on it? But I thought the health department guy had to look at it, make sure it checked out.
Okay, uh, and that, I'll ask this, we, we handed it to Jamie, so where'd it go to from there?
It's laying in a folder on my desk.
Well, nobody signed off on it.
No, you don't, nobody signs off on it. He wants to know who checked it to make sure you have one income. I don't check that. The health department is supposed to do that, and then y'all bring it back to me.
They said him, nope.
And then if it's approved through the health department, then.
Wow.
Nope, they said.
They're passing it on to us to check.
They said, give it, give it to the water department or bring it back to us. Our option was either drive it back to Hamilton, or drive it very quickly.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it wouldn't be hard if someone approved it, that you, they can.
Don't you have to take a copy of the?
Look, that, that was what I.
That's fine.
Income last year?
I had a copy of, of my other bank statement, so you use bank statements to show your income.
Right, it just doesn't make sense that they want you to come down there and get a form, but they want us to prove it's one income, if they're making you get a form. It should be up, it should be, if they're gonna do that, it should be just up to the town to bring that in and prove it.
But we, we didn't prove that she's only, she's only got social security.
So you drove all the way down there and.
The way, the way you did that was basically you showed, here's the bank statement, the only deposit is social security.
Who'd you have to show it to?
Jamie.
Okay. Well, you bring the form online.
No, we wouldn't got the form, no.
But what I'm saying is, I think you can bring them online.
We didn't find it, but we.
Still, but still, you gotta get the form from the, because I. Anyway, I, I, I think we need to look into it, but if we have to, if we have to vote to do it again, that's whatever. I'd say silly, but, you know, they could, we could, surely there's someone we can verify. You just bring the bank statement down there and show.
That you're saying to make a copy of their bank statements and put it all on a folder? Individual folder for individual cases.
That, that's my word, did y'all keep that, or did y'all send it to the county?
No, 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 we. That's where it's posted, yes, yes.
I don't think what they're, 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 I was saying, the health department's responsible for.
They're, that's what I meant, too.
That's why I've always, I've always led to believe they were the ones to decide that.
Because that's why I was asking her, I was like, I don't know if I'm gonna refuse this or not, because I thought the health department verified all that.
Let's, let's, let's call the health department and let's see what's going on.
But I do know it's up to the town, if they want to offer that.
Bank statement. Up, not up to you, but.
Well, I mean, the person that's, the law board swears that they're telling you to turn it down, I mean. You gotta take it with the word, it's one of them, I mean.
Well, that's true, but I'd rather not us have your mother's bank records.
No.
And, and them regular to town, you know.
I mean, our application, I'm fine with that, but I don't mind.
Well, that's more of a government.
But until, until we go through it, I mean, we just need to keep them.
Yeah, we just need, we need to check it.
Because I, I mean, I feel for those folks.
So we'll put that on the next agenda, but for now, everything is still in place. And if there's any change.
No garbage to anybody, yeah, I've left it the same as old.
Now, she's good, she could pay it her, because sometime, it wasn't required that she have this form, I guess. And all of a sudden, they said, oh, you gotta have this form, so boom, because her, her garbage had been added to hers the last couple of years.
Was that like two years ago or so in the form? Yeah, and that is, the town pick her garbage up, or the county pick her garbage up?
Or picks it on the other end.
She's in, she's in, too.
She's in, so they can.
Years ago, we used to do that. That's what my, our life's trying to say.
So now, how do we get it stopped? Do we?
You can answer. I'm a researcher, we'll y'all find out.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Thank you.
It's not a lot of money, but.
But it's, yeah, I, I agree.
It's designed for purpose, you know.
Hey, man. Yes, and we'll start now with your statement.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring my motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm the favorer.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewstv.